Alrighty, welcome everybody to this special edition of Brownsville Tech Live. And in the house tonight, we've got a special guest. Her name is Nurith Galanski Pisagna. She is serving as our City Commissioner for District One. Ms. Galanski, welcome to the show.
Thank you for the invitation.
It is an honor to have you. I know it's your first time, there's been others that have been on about four times or more. So, we thank you for accepting our invitation. And so, just to get started a little bit for the viewers that don't know you. Could you give us a little bit of background of how, of who Ms. Nurith Galanski is? Where she's been, where she's from, what she's done? Kind of give us a little bit of, you know, insight into who you are.
Sure, my name is Nurith Galanski Pisagna. I was born in Brownsville, I'm forty-eight years old. I've, I'm living in the same home that I've lived most of my life. I went away for twenty years for college and grad school and worked. But I've been back now ten years on November first. I, I went to college at Stanford University. Then I went to law school at Southern Methodist University. I worked for five years in Dallas. And then I applied to business school and went to the University of Texas in Austin. And got my MBA there. Then I moved back to Brownsville briefly for four months and then I got a job back in Dallas. And I worked there two and a half, three years or so. And so, I've been back now since November first of 2012. And so, since I've been back, I've been involved in the community. I served on the P U B board and thanks to the P U B board, I also got to serve on the B E D C board. I was appointed to the Gypick Board also. And once I got elected in 2019, I gave that all up and, well, I gave up the P U B position to serve on the City Commission. And so, I've been the District One City Commissioner since June of 2019.
Okay. Now, let's talk a little bit about what made you run initially for, for City Commissioner for District One?
So, thanks to my position at the Brownsville Public Utilities Board. I was, they, the P U B had a seat on the Board of B E D C, which existed back then. So, I was involved in that. I also was involved in the L R G B D C partnership. No, it was called Restech, sorry. It's been such a long time. And I was also briefly appointed to the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation. And then I was removed from that because of a lawsuit that I brought. So, when that happened and I didn't see the direction that the city was going, I think that was really my impetus for, for running for the City Commission. And I remember I was having dinner with some girlfriends from high school. And I ran into, into a friend and I asked him, hey, are you gonna run? Because it was November of 2018. And there, there was rumors that he was gonna run. And so, I asked, hey, are you gonna run? And he goes, no, no, I'm getting my business up and going. I can't do it right now. And so, I said, well, then I might do it. And I remember walking back to the table where my girlfriends were sitting. And I said, I just told someone that I'm gonna run, so I guess I have to do it now. And that's, that's kind of how it happened. But I have no regrets. It's been a wonderful experience. It's got its challenges, but for the most part, it's, it's really good. You get to know and see all the things that are happening around the city. Most of the people are really wonderful and very receptive to, to the stuff that you're doing. And, I mean, yeah, sure, I would like to be able to address everyone's needs and issues and complaints and stuff. But unfortunately, you know, there's only so much money and there's different priorities. So, you just try to make the best out of the situation.
Now, let me ask you this, you're representing District One, which includes Southmost and where else? Because I'm actually from Southmost, I used to live down there as a kid.
What street?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, on which side of, of Southmost?
On the, on the left side coming from International. Yeah.
Okay, so closer to Reese Park?
Yes, actually Reese Park was one of the parks right behind my street. Because all my family lived around Twenty-seventh and then Cayet Ruiz. And then, of course, Twenty-Fifth. So, all my friends and my family lived around there. Of course, I don't have much family down there anymore. But I remember Reese Park quite a bit, used to go down there to play. But not only that, I used to, I told somebody, I think it was, I think your opponent when he was on a couple of weeks ago, I said, I remember Reese Park very well. Because the First Baptist Church used to come down during the summer and have Vacation Bible School. And my mom used to force me to go to Vacation Bible School. So, I used to hide every time Jude came around. Because I didn't want to go to Vacation Bible School, God help me, right? But the only reason I went is for the snow cones and the games, but that was about it. But they used to hold it there. That was before Reese Park really didn't have any playgrounds and stuff like that, like they do now. I mean, they didn't even have a blacktop back in those days. It was just grass, you know? So, I know that it's got playsets and, you know, blacktop and stuff like that. But back in those days, there was nothing. It was just, you know, a strip of land in a Y intersection and, you know, kids went there to play and so forth. So, but...
So, I don't know if you've visited in the past two or three years, but that was one of the first areas that got fixed after, after I got elected. I mean, it was already on the schedule when I got elected. But all the streets there in that area got resurfaced. There have been upgrades to the little park. They have new, new play equipment. And, and well, the, the trail right behind it, on Southmost Nature Trail. That's actually where I took the, the picture on my campaign. Is taken from the little bridge that connects Reese Park to the Southmost Nature Trail.
Oh, there's a bridge?
Yes. So, if you go down to Reese Street to the end, then there's a little bridge that connects you to the trail. And it connects the whole neighborhood to the trail.
Oh, wow.
It's been awhile. A manatee which I'm, not more people know about.
Wow, yeah, I mean, it's been about three years since I've been down there, ever since my mom died and we sold the house and everything. So, I had no idea that I, that, you know, there was a bridge. I mean, I remember as a kid, believe it or not, going down to the canal down there and actually fishing from the canal and stuff like that. So, you know, we used to go down there and fish and then come back up and so forth. And of course, I remember a time even when all that street around Owens, it was not even developed. I mean, there was no nature trail or anything like that, you know? So, that's definitely a change, you know, from the past, no doubt about it. You know, now that you mentioned parks, what other upgrades are we doing to Gonzalez? I mean, I remember going as a kid to go swim at the swimming pool. But if there have been any upgrades there, are there any plans to do any upgrades to some of those parks?
So, actually, Gonzalez Park is one of the anchor spaces for the International Southmost Choice Neighborhood Grant. Back in November of two thousand and twenty, yeah, twenty, no, twenty-one. The city in partnership with the Housing Authority for the City of Brownsville. We applied for a grant from the Housing and Urban Development Department. And it's a, it's a grant, they gave us $400,000 to come up with a transformation plan for that area. So, since we received it November of twenty-one, we actually have to submit the final report by November of twenty-three. And the, the footprint extends from where Victoria Gardens is, which is on the Frontage Road and International, all the way to the corner of International and Southmost and then all the way up to Gonzalez Park. Because Gonzalez Park is like the major community point that we saw in that area. Our early action project is focused on, on Gonzalez Park. And so, some of the things that we've been discussing and we've been trying to get more input from is public art in that area. I know that they're also, they recently also won a grant to do a community garden back there. Because they're also offering nutrition classes and gardening classes to the kids that attend the Saturday afternoon program. And we're just trying to revitalize that area so that more people use it. We're fortunate enough that only, the, we only, the Downtown Rec Center is the only other rec center besides Gonzalez Park. So, there's no, those are the only two rec centers that we have in the city. And, and so, we're trying to maximize the use of that, of that space. It's really nice. Yesterday, I went to the kickoff of the Little Miss Kickball Riverside season. They're doing new programs all the time. I think they even are trying to create a lily pond in that area. We're gonna, we're trying to change, right now, it's a black building, which looks a little bit menacing or not very inviting. So, eventually, the plan is to change the color, the, the outside look. We would like to have a mural, maybe also increase, increase the signage that leads you to that area, just so that it gets utilized more. Back in, in October, we had a haunted, like a Halloween event right at the beginning of October. And it was very well received, very well attended. I think we had over three or five hundred kids. And it was people from all over town. And so, we would like to make actually the whole Southmost area be a destination for everyone to enjoy. Because oftentimes, there's a lot of people who have a connection to this, to this area. But unfortunately, once they grow up, once they have, you know, slightly better income, they choose to live in North Brownsville. And so, that's been one of the things that I've worked hard to try to do. Make it so that people really want to stay here. I think it's the best part of town. And it's just a matter of showing all the great things that it has to offer.
Right now, one of the things that I think I saw a few days ago was that there is some movement to preserve some cypress trees over there by Esperanza Park. Could you talk a little bit about the cypress trees, but also what the long-term plans are for La Esperanza Park? If, I think I'm getting the name of the park correct.
So, the, we call it La Posada Montezuma Cypress Park.
La Posada, sorry.
Yes, but I think at one point, maybe Eugene Fernandez wanted to call it La Esperanza Cypress Preserve.
Yeah, I think I got my terminology confused, but it's alright.
So, it's off of La Posada, which is a certain section further east in the district. And it has this beautiful stand of, I think it's forty-one Montezuma Cypress trees. At one point, as Eugene Fernandez loves to tell the history of the place. At one point, the whole valley was covered in these Montezuma Cypruses, which are related to the ones that we see in the Riverwalk, which are bald cypruses. But they're different. And unfortunately though, once the railroad came in, they toward, they knocked down a lot of those trees to use the lumber for railroad ties, for housing, for building, the different buildings. And so, this stand of forty, forty-plus trees are some of the last remaining, like cluster, a large cluster of trees. And with the help of citizens like Mr. Fernandez and there's other people in the city, they are trying to preserve that space and turn it into a park. As a matter of fact, the city is in the process of creating a task force that will study how to develop that park, maybe do fundraising. And the plan is to make it a very unique park where people can kayak on the risaka. And it has that historical bridge, because it used to be the location of the Jagu Plantation. Currently, there's also an urban farm that's maintained and run by the Brownsville Wellness Coalition. And Mr. Fernandez also has a nursery to grow more Montezuma Cypruses. He informed me on Saturday that he has about six hundred seedlings that he's hoping to, to keep growing and maybe even grow up to a thousand, which then he will use to plant around the city to see if he can reforest it. And I think it's wonderful that we need more green spaces. Southmost is, is that area. This area is one of the luscious areas, but because of development, we might not be aware of it anymore. And it's just a wonderful place to be. If you, if you look at it right now, there's water in the risaka and it's just very majestic when you go. It's a small little, it's about one mile long, but they're going to make a trail out of it. And it's, it's going to slowly, as, as money comes in and as P U B has it on their radar for part of the risaka restoration project. They've already done the surveying. And so, in combination with a grant from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, they're going to dredge it and make it deeper to sustain the water there, which will be good for the cypruses, because they do need to have their roots submerged in water in order to be able to, to live. And there's a lot of native flora there that, that's nice to have.
Yeah. Now, with regards to dredging, I know we've seen that activity, you know, in the past with the city. Do you know how, what the goal is? How, how deep do the risakas need to be to, to maintain their, their, I guess, their health and vitality? Do you know, I mean, what that dredging would be? Is it like three feet, six feet?
Well, so each risaka bed has a clay lining, a natural clay lining. And this is my understanding of it. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'm not, but in my layman's terms, this is how I understand it. The risaka beds have a clay lining. And so, once you get to that point, that's how you know where, where the water, where it can hold the water. Right now, they're still testing that and that's why when they fill the water, it'll evaporate after a certain time. But once they reach that level and clear it out, then it should be able to retain the water indefinitely. Minus the evaporation that, that naturally occurs. But I think it varies then from, from risaka to risaka and maybe from a point to point within each risaka. Because it might, not that I'm an engineer or anything, but I assume that topography, like it changes at different depths.
Right. Now, is the, I know there's a few people in the past have been complaining about a risaka fee. Is the risaka fee what is used to maintain those risakas and dredge them and things like that?
Yes. So, the reason why the risaka fee was imposed is because P U B, you have to keep the electric utility separate from the water utility, from the wastewater. You can't mix the money. Whatever is generated in, in water, for the water utility has to stay within the water. You, you use it to invest in water infrastructure, but you can't do crossover. So, the risaka fee, in order to take advantage of this Army Corps of Engineer grant, which is millions of dollars to dredge a lot of miles of risaka. And in addition, there's one from the Restore Act, which is, remember that Shell Oil? I think it was Shell Oil, or was it BP? They had an oil spill somewhere in the Gulf a few years back. And so, the state got money for that to, to clean up the waterways. And so, P U B and the risaka restoration project, the risaka restoration project qualified for some of that money. However, P U B has to match a certain amount to be able to, to grab, get that money. And so, in order to get that money, that's why the risaka fee was imposed. Because we, P U B had to, to be able to come up with, with the matching funds. Because they couldn't take it from electric, from the electric utility. There wasn't enough from the water, because they also have to, you know, invest in the, in the regular water infrastructure that allows for us to have running tap water coming out of our taps. So, that's, and so, even if you don't live on a risaka, you still benefit from it. Because probably, even if you live across the street, for example, your lot probably drains into a risaka. These risakas are reservoirs of water. When we have these heavy rainstorms, that's where the water's going and then it connects to the river. And it's, it's a water source. It's a water reservoir. So, on, on top of that, just if, even if you don't live on it, it's the beauty of, of the risakas that, that make our, our city so, so unique and, and beautiful. So, we tried to come up with, with fees that were within people's range of possibilities, so that it wasn't too taxing on the ratepayers. But at the same time, we all benefit because of the stormwater drainage.
Right. Yeah, there's no doubt that, you know, without those risakas, we'd see a lot more flooding, I would think. You know? You know, we're pretty lucky that we have those estuaries around to actually help us with drainage and so forth. So, let's talk a little bit about, you know, I know you've covered some things that you've accomplished, but there, have there been other things that you can note that you've been proud of? And I think you've served, what, one or two terms already?
No, this is my first term.
Okay, okay, so...
So, now, of term limits, we can, I can only do two terms as a City Commissioner.
Okay. So, what can you, what can you recall over the last four years or so that you're most proud of accomplishing for your district?
More than anything, I feel that, that we've received the recognition. There's more resources allocated than before. We've had a lot of residential streets redone. We have a lot of infrastructure money, or infrastructure projects being, being started. So, for example, there by the Southmost Nature Trail, they're in the process of developing the Water Plain Park, which will help with drainage in the Four Corners area and more. And what this, if you've walked through the Southmost Nature Trail before, those big deep holes that you see, that's gonna be another reservoir for drainage. So, when it's dry, people can use it as a park, similar to that field next to Falk Middle School, where when it's dry, they use it as a soccer field. But when it rains a lot, it serves as, as a detention pond. So, the city has gone, I think it's over fourteen million dollars from the Texas Water Development Board to create that park. And from a report that I read recently, it should start going up for bids in the fall. There's also, they're doing a reservoir project over by the Impala Pump Station, which I think eleven million dollars of CARES Act money is going to be allocated for that. We've had, well, upgrades to parks such as Reese Park and then Garfield Park too. We've, here at the library where I'm at, the Southmost Library, I'm really proud to say that before, the Southmost Library was not open as many hours as, as the main branch, but now it is. They have this wonderful new interior look and we can't see it from, from this, from the view right now. There's this beautiful mural done by a local artist named Alejandra Sertuche. And how her design came up was they did an art contest, the library did, asking people to submit what they would like to see. And so, out of the entries that, that the jury thought most, thought nicest, then Alejandra Sertuche came and did a whole mural, using the different winners' entries. And so, that will be unveiled soon, I think it's April eleventh. Let me think, other things. We've done a lot more events here in the area. For example, well, Dia de los Reyes is the third, this was the third year that we celebrated and we just celebrated it out of Gonzalez Park. I've also been involved in Dia de la Mujer, which was celebrated at the Brownsville Event Center. But we invite women of all Brownsville to participate. We had our first stand to run also in December here at Gonzalez Park. The reason why we focused more on Gonzalez Park was just because we have that grant from the HUD to do more events, to activate the space of Gonzalez Park. But we've also done stuff at Morningside Park, we've done cleanups. Lincoln Park is also in, in District One. And most important, that, or that I'm proud of is that I try to attend meetings and stuff and I advocate that things get done in Southmost. For example, when the pandemic started and, you know, we didn't know what was going to happen. If you recall, B I S D said, you know, we're not gonna, we're gonna stop serving the free lunches. The kids were already learning from home. And there's that food, food insecurity already is an issue, even without the pandemic. So, when you put the pandemic on top of that, it exacerbates the problem even more. And so, when the whole pandemic started and, and B I S D announced that they were not gonna be giving out the free lunches, there was a group of people that got together to try to find a solution to the problem. I got lucky and I got invited to that meeting. And I remember that at that point, one of the city employees was recommending that all just food distributions happen out of the event center. I was like, no way. The people here in Southmost are some of, are some of the ones that would need it the most. They might, a lot, the biggest ridership in the city comes out of this part of the city. And so, it's unfair to expect them to go all the way to the event center to get, you know, their food distribution. So, I'm thankful to the team, especially United Way and the Brownsville Wellness Coalition, because they've always been mindful that there's a great need here in Southmost and they've always looked out for the residents' interest here. And so, right now, we're having, out of every month, they have two distributions, one out of the event center and one out of the Southmost Library. At one point, it was coming out of the Stateo Middle School, but at least there's always been food distributions here in this area. And so, so little things like that, I'll show up to meetings or, you know, just, just, um, just talking about things and, and asking that things get done. I'm very, oh, one, another good, great example. This was the first time in over thirty years that they had Christmas lights at Gonzalez Park. A couple of years ago, the Brownsville Beautification Committee decided to allocate sixty thousand dollars to doing Christmas lights. And so, the first year, I mean, they have beautiful Christmas lights at Dean Porter Park, right? Or Ringo Park during the December. But they've, they never, until this, this past December, they had, they actually came out here. And it was beautiful, people received it very well. The residents in all parts of the city are entitled to it. But not, and, and maybe we can't afford it in all places, but it was time that we do it in this part of the town too. I mean, we're one of the older sections of the city, or one of the most densely populated areas. It's, it's about time that we get heard and that we be considered, because we're just as, we have the same needs as, as everyone else.
Now, with regards to, I know at one time, there was a veterans parade down there that was held in Southmost. Does that still happen?
Uh huh, yes, yes, it happens in November. I went to it this year and it's always a lot of fun.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that the veterans, there are a couple of veterans groups are trying to raise, I think, thirty-five thousand dollars for an actual Huey from the Vietnam era. They want to put it as a, as a model there at the, at the Veterans Park next to the main public branch. I think that would be really cool, because, you know, the Huey, you know, the Vietnam era was a very versatile piece of equipment. You know, it saved lives, it fought and so forth. So, I'm hoping that the veterans group is successful at doing so, because that would definitely be one eye-catching model, that's for sure, down there at the park. Now, I don't know exactly where they put it, but it would be something pretty cool to do. I was just curious, I hadn't heard much about the parade down there, but I'm glad that it's still being held, you know? Because I think, you know, a lot of people don't realize that a lot of veterans actually come out of Southmost, you know? So, yeah.
Yes, yes. No, it was wonderful. I actually thought that this one was the best, because at the very end, I don't know if you go to the Chao Days parades, but you know how they have the horses that, you know, they, they do the, these coordinated or choreographed walks and stuff? So, they actually had them at the Veterans Parade this past November. They were the closing segment of, of the parade and it was lovely. Absolutely, like they had the classic cars. You see just a lot of people lining up along the street. It's an awesome event and I wish we could have more parades here, you know?
Yeah, I mean, my, my dad was a veteran, well, my entire family pretty much has served in the military except for me. But keep in mind that I grew up in a different era, so, but most of my uncles and, you know, my family members served in the military. My dad never missed a, a veterans parade when it was, when it was held down there. He'd walk, you know, down Twenty-seventh and head over to the, to the front down on Southmost to wait for the parade. So, I'm glad that's still... I'm glad that's still happening, so that's a good thing, you know.
Thank you to all the volunteers that make it happen.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. You know, I'd love to see it really be a big thing one day, to be honest with you. That would be really cool, you know. Let's talk a little bit about the uh, BTX Fiber Project and I don't know how much you're involved in that. But uh, you know, I've had a few candidates uh, on, you know, in the last month or so and I, that's one of the things that I typically focus on, because. After all, we are Tech Show, we are the only local podcast that follows SpaceX twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days out of the year. So we keep abreast of of what's going on technically in the city and this, this is. A project that we think is really important to the city and. One of the things that, you know, I've brought up time and time again with most of my guests is how important is to deliver those services. To the people that need it the most. You know, I live over here in North Brownsville now. I have high-speed internet. But you know, I know that there's a lot of people down in Southmost. And I remember living down in Southmost, I couldn't even get DSL back in those days through AT&T, it was very difficult. And so, you know, when the pandemic started, you know, when the pandemic started, you know, one of the fir- first things that we ran into is we. Noticed a lot of kids did not have internet connectivity, you know, in this day and age, you know. You know, three, a quarter into the twenty-first century and we still have kids that don't have access. I mean, they had to stand in line for one of these and these weren't that great, you know. So one of the things is obviously, you know, I know the city is working on, on the fiber project and if you don't mind, I'm gonna flip a couple of screens here. So one of the things that we've got here, let me get rid of the lower thirds here for a minute. There we go, is the BTX Fiber Project and one of the things that I've broken it down into. Based on some research that I've done is that it's apparently geared in different phases. So one of the very first phases that I, that I know is gonna happen is the downtown area will be the first. Phase to come up and I believe that's gonna be completed somewhere or it's scheduled to be completed somewhere between June or July of this year. The second one that I was a little surprised to be honest with you. Uh, was the second phase, which is gonna include Southmost and that's one of the things that I've been advocating for a long time. That, you know, if anybody deserves access to the internet, it's District One, it's the people down on Southmost. Cause they've been waiting for it for a long time, much more longer than people think. I mean, hey, I'll take the fiber over here up in North Brownsville, yeah. I'll take it if it's offered to me and I'll take it for forty dollars, but honestly. I don't need it right away, you know what I'm saying? So, one of the things that I want to uh, find out from you is, is. Will you pledge tonight to say that you're gonna do everything possible to ensure that we do keep. That promise that Southmost is gonna be second on the list. I don't mind downtown being first. But at least Brown, at least Southmost deserves that, because they've been needing access for a long time. And God forbid, the next time we have a pandemic, they shouldn't rely on something like this, you know.
Yes, um, so I'll be honest, uh. All of this is a little bit foreign language to me, but I have been told that Salmo's is the sixth ring. I don't know if if that means phase two, but that was the last, like, sixth ring, um. It is beneficial. My concern is, well, twofold. One, a lot of the people here are older and so I might, uh, they might not see the need for it, cause I'll be honest, I don't have internet at home. I, from what my, from my telephone and from this iPad, uh, I don't have, uh, cause I don't have like down. Uh, downstreaming, uh, streaming, streaming services and stuff. So, um, but because of that, that's why I'm here at the library, to make sure that I have a reliable connection, but and a fast enough one so that you can see me. And hear me um, on real time, instead of having the delay, cause if I did it at home, I could have probably had a dropped connection. But um, so as I was saying, I have two concerns. One, um, a lot of our population here is older. They might not see the benefit for it. And two, if you're saying it's forty-four, uh, sorry, if it's forty dollars a month. Forty dollars a month for a lot of the households here is not affordable. They have um, many other. Um, expenses that maybe take priority, but if you have young kids, yes, it it would be good to have it at home. So one of the things that I would like to see is to find a way to really make it affordable for for all other people to really be engaged. Cause it's not really of much value to have the con- the option for connectivity when no one's really connecting to it. Um, I, for example, my next door neighbor, he was very excited to to know that it was coming. But um, he's the exception, I think, to to most families. When you have to figure out how you're gonna pay your rent, your utilities or your mortgage. Um, food, transportation and all that. Um, BT, uh, the, the fiber connective, uh, the internet con- connection might not be a top priority. So we have to make it um, help people understand how it can help them. I do think it provides a great value. So for example, um, there's a great need for more medical services throughout the city. But even more particularly here in the Southmost area. We have a new clinic coming in um, on Elsa and and um, Southmost. But it's, there's still so many more families that need medical services here and we just don't have enough people to staff these clinics. So having uh, internet connections would allow for tele- uh, telemedicine to happen. Which would be of great value and. People to work um, from home, as as we see SpaceX employees are all over our city and and um. They probably need a higher. Or a better quality connection. So and we need to be able to afford, uh, allow people the freedom to live wherever they want or work from wherever they want. And yet um, have the tools to be able to do it. So for that, um, the BTX fiber is is beneficial.
Now, the only question I have, I I know that there's other areas in the chart that get talked about, but the one that caught my attention and you may not have the answer to this. But I'll ask the question, why on earth are we even connecting Los Fresnos in number four and number five? Do you have any idea? I mean, I'm in shock. I mean, I thought this was.
They may have made some sort of agreement, you all, well, um. The North Brownsville was part of the Los Fresnos uh, consolidated school district, right? Um, that part I don't know, um. Like I mentioned before we started the show, I'm not the tech savvy person. I am forty-eight years old, so I'm at that cusp where either you're. Gung ho tech or gung ho not and I'm in the, I I u- I use it, so.
I'm not being stingy, you know, if we, if we feel we can share the connection with Los Fresnos, fine. It just caught my attention. I was like. Why on earth are we even connecting Los Fresnos? Let them get their own stuff, you know, so I wasn't sure. I mean, it's not a big deal for me, I just. I was just curious to find out why they were even on the chart, you know, yeah.
I would assume that they've made a partnership and and so they've probably, uh, uh, you know, there's economies of scale. And so if we partnered as cities um, to do it, then there's probably economies of scale.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, I wouldn't, I I would ask anymore with regard to that. I was, it just caught my attention. I was like, huh, you know, so. Alright, well, let's flip back to the regular screen here. Alrighty, so let's go ahead, let me uh, get my notes here, cause I had a few things. Um, what do you think, uh? As far as street repairing improvements uh, in sidewalks, I know I was talking to somebody earlier and they were complaining that. Um, Lopez High School, I don't know if they're in the city or not in the city, but there's no sidewalks down there. And in fact, I, I, I said, are you sure? So I went over and did a Google Maps. And sure enough, no, there's no sidewalks, but even what's worse, there's no bu- there's a bus stop, but no shelter. So for any kids out there that are, you know, hopping on the bus, I mean, if it's on a rainy day, on on a rainy day or a cold day. Or even a sunny day, I mean, there, there's nothing to cover them up. Um, what can we do to get some sh- shelters out there? I mean. I think I had heard on one of the other podcasts that we do have the shelters, but that they haven't all completely been installed, is. Is that the case or we just don't have them, you know?
So in that area, if um, you haven't traveled, there's a lot of issues to contend with. First of all. Um, Dakota is the street that goes towards the airport and it goes along Lopez and Idea Frontier. So you have two big high schools. In that area and it's a narrow street with no curbs and gutters. They just have the ditches on the side. And um, a lot of kids walk to school um, along that street, which is heavily trafficked. The Brownsville bus, public bus, uh, the metro, they drive through there, they have some routes that go through there, cause they, they're dropping off kids. You know, at Lopez and at Idea Frontier. So, but the thing is, it's not all city property. Some, both the schools are within the city, but then you'll see some of the parks that, uh, trailer parks that are on it, those are county. So you've got weaving in and out of, of city and and um, county jurisdiction. There's two new subdivisions going, being built on the other corner, the Catty Corner. Uh, across the street from Idea Frontier and Catty Corner from, which is gonna increase traffic. I think there's both single-family um. Subdivisions, so you're gonna have a lot of houses going in there really soon. And it's something we really need to address and not only in the, that particular area, but also I think in a lot of. This area, which is older, has older infrastructure and we haven't really kept up with um, traffic needs. Uh, because we ha- we're having more traffic, we have more people, yet the streets have not been adapted to to address those needs. Quite honestly, I almost think that that street needs to get widened, especially now that we're having those two new subdivisions um, being built. The bus shelters, while yes, it is a priority. We need, we need to widen that street first, almost. I think that's a bigger priority. Um, or sidewalks. And for that, um, this trail project, you know, extending the the trails is really advantageous. Right now, we have the Salmo's Nature Trail that runs from Porter to Del Castillo. And then the second phase, which could, was completed this past fiscal year, runs from the Salmo's Public Library. To the La Posada Montezuma Cypress Preserve on La Posada, that's a really short segment. The next segment, which is expected to start. Next fiscal year will run from the La Posada Montezuma Cypress Preserve to Vestado Middle School. So if we keep doing these um, trails or sidewalk, uh, trails. Where kids and families do not have to use the streets to get to school safely without the risk of traffic. That's also a great way of addressing the the problem. Um, and so hopefully, I remember a couple of years ago, BISD had a survey circulating to parents of. Of kids at Lopez, um, Aiken, Salmo's Elementary. And I think Vestado, a- all that, all those, Palm Grove maybe, and um. The problem is that those kinds of projects take years. First, you have to do the, the engineering, um, the. Uh, feasibility studies, all those things, and then you have to collect the money to be able to do it, but. I know that um, in partnership with Tech dot and the MPO, there are programs that can help us address that. Mind you, it's, these are long-term projects that you get, do in little pieces, uh, you know, in segments. Um, so it's not something that will happen overnight, but it is something that we're working to address.
Okay, not a problem. And I wanna be cognizant of the fact that you've got a time limit there. I don't want them to lock you in at the library. So I, I really wanna just touch on one other issue and obviously that's PUB. Um, you know, you did mention that you served on the PUB board, I don't know for how long, but. I had Mr. Coscos on um, last week and, you know, he was part of the Charter Review Committee. Uh, I think he's been on there twice and, you know, we went pretty thoroughly through. Some of the proposed charter amendments that are on the ballot for May sixth, but. You know, there was a couple of things that were kinda revealing to, to me, you know, um, and probably a few other people was that. It almost appears like the charter amendments don't go far enough. I mean, I don't wanna talk about the salary thing, that's not. That's not something I wanna talk about tonight, you know, but um, I wanna talk to you about. Do you feel that those charter amendments go far enough? I mean, the impression that I got from Mr. Coscos and and going through the, the list of the amendments was that. I can now see how we ended up in the PUB uh, Tanaska Fiasco. It almost appeared that the city just doesn't have enough power or authority over PUB. Uh, the way Mr. Coscos explained it to me was that. You know, PUB basically, you know, the city does not have any control over PUB's budget, they don't. They can't really push anybody to get hired or fired over there, uh. Can you give us some insight into that for some of us that are still confused? Cause honestly, I'm going into May. Seventh, I mean, May sixth, when it comes to those charter amendments and I'm not yet certain whether they're all positive or all negative. Can you give us some insight if you can with regards to some of those things? I mean, is anything gonna improve? I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to get at.
So I think the bigger issue with PUB is. You need to appoint people that you trust will do the work, to be good board members and to really look out for ratepayers' best interests, right? If you have competent people who are there, who know how to read financial statements. Who can understand, will show up to meetings, part to engage in in, in the discussions. Who will do their best to inform themselves, to make sure that uh, what they're voting on is, is, makes sense. That's what we really need. Um, the problem with P, I don't know that how, for the city to. In my opinion, the city having more control isn't really the solution. As a city commissioner, we have so many other preoccupations and PUB is. A really um, complicated. Organization to, to understand. I served on that board for six years. I can honestly say it took me about three and a half years to finally get the hang of it. I am a lawyer, I have, I've, I've been licensed since twenty-two thousand, so I, I've been licensed, you know, for over twenty years. I have my MBA, so I can presumably, you know, read financials and I have all that, but. It, it was really a, a lo- uh, steep learning curve to learn how the, how the organization works in all the things that they do. And that that I've. I put in all the time and. The effort to, to try to educate myself by talking to stuff and stuff about what's going on. So, as a city commissioner, I can honestly say you don't have time to be delving in-depth into all that. So that's why I've always made sure to appoint people that I trust, that I know will do the job to attend the meetings, to inform themselves. To ask questions, to not be intimidated by what the others are saying, or who will just, you know, go along with what others are saying, because maybe that's. That's what's the right thing. They don't wanna, you know, rock the boat, um. We have to be able to, we have to, when we uh, uh, have appointees, we have to put people that are competent. For any um, board that's, that sits um, on any board, especially the ones that handle large sums of money like the PUB Board. So, having more city oversight, I don't think would have made. I mean, sure, it'd be nice, but in all honesty, I, I remember when the. Uh, one of the members from the Charter Review Committee suggested, well, maybe if, if you have. Sorry, so now we know our time is limited. Um, so uh, what I wanted to say is, um. As a city commission member. Sure, oh, oh, so, so what, the Charter Review Committee was, was uh. Proposing that maybe, you know, the budget get approved by us, that uh, once a quarter or so, we have. Uh, as a PUB presentation done, you know, to the city commission. But let's be real, how long can that city commission, uh, sorry, that presentation be ten, fifteen minutes? How much can you really get from a ten to fifteen minute presentation, then from your appointee who's there every month, ta- reading the, the. The board packet and stuff like that. So, um, well, I think that. I, I, I'm, I didn't think anything, I voted against the salary increase for the city positions, but the other ones. They're not harmful. I don't know that they'll solve the problems as, as, as you mentioned, but they might help a little, you know?
It just seemed to me that, you know, some people, I guess, were under the impression that. You know, we have found our magic silver bullets and everything was gonna be cool and dandy and, and you know, after going through the. The whole, the, all of them with Mr. Coscos last week, it kinda dawned on me, well, you know, uh, I mean, yeah, there's. You know, there's a positive to being able to get rid of three people within a given calendar year, which right now I think you're limited to one. Per calendar year and stuff like that, so, um, I mean, I, I, I get it. I mean, I understand what, what you're saying. I, I just, uh. You know, I, I don't know, I mean, sometimes there is a little advantage to, you know, control the power of the purse, so to speak, you know? Um, you know, but I guess we'll, we'll have to see as we move forward, you know, uh, how the. Current amendments uh, are impacted, uh, you know, down the road in the future. Um, with regards to, to the um, the salaries, just, just a little bit, and I know we've got little time. I know there's other candidates, some of the mayoral candidates have said that. I know there's other candidates, some of the mayoral candidates have said that uh, if the salary amendment passes, um, they would be willing to forego, uh, you know, the salary. Would, would you, would you also be under the same uh, pledge to forego the salary?
For years, so, and uh, and actually, um, if it were to be uh, adopted by, by the, it wouldn't apply to us cause it has to be to new, to newly appoint. Um, so those of us who, who have been in, um, even if we get re-elected, uh, even if, for example, uh, Jessica or, or John Cowan, if they were elected for mayor, I believe that they would not qualify because they're not new, uh, new candidates. It would only, new candidates.
Nobody's said that. Well, that's a good thing because everybody should be impressed and that, you know, as soon as this thing passes, everybody's gonna get a check the following month, so. Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. That's good to know. I, 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 I understand. And I know we're limited for time and I wish, you know, we had more time, but uh, and I mean, I got plenty of everything says-
Be back!
Right? You can be back at any time you want. Uh, is there any lasting, uh, you know, uh, comments you wanna say to our viewers out there with regards to, you know, the upcoming election and why, you know, they should uh, pick you versus your opponent at this point, at, at this time?
Sure. It's important to have someone who will really be an advocate for, for the city and for residents of District One. And so if you're there, I hope that um, that I've convinced you that I've done uh, more than my predecessor uh, for, you know, um, in terms of, of actually getting our district heard. Um, in terms of my opponent, um, he claims that it's time for new leadership. I've only been here three and a half years. I'm not that old. Maybe I'm old enough to be his mother, but uh, at forty-eight, I think I'm still, you know, I still have a few good years in me. Um, but you know, I've always, in my twenty-some years of, of advocacy, I've always rooted for the underdog. My experience was in CPS uh, law, uh, welfare law. Um, so I've represented kids in foster care, juvenile delinquents, families who have, or who have lost custody of their children. So I've always been, been an advocate for, for the people. Um, and I would love to the opportunity to continue um, to, to advocate for the residents of District One. Um, I really love my district. I think it is the best. Um, no one can take it away. Uh, you know, like my passion for, for what I've been doing is, is really genuine and I hope that I am honored and privileged to, to do it another four years.
Alrighty, well, Ms. Galansky, it was a pleasure to have you on. I told you it wouldn't be too bad. I'm actually the nicest podcaster out of all of them out there, to be honest.
Thank you. Yeah, I enjoyed it. Uh huh, and it's nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you and like I said, you're always welcome at any time, whether win or lose, you can come on at any time you, you like, so uh, you know, if hopefully, uh, you know, I decide to do a few more before the election, you'll, you'll be on the list to get re-invited, so.
Thank you.
But definitely, we appreciate you for coming on tonight and uh, we wish you the best of luck uh, with regards to May seventh and any future endeavors you decide to do as well, so. Um, we will see you uh, soon. And everybody, that was Myth, uh, Ms. Nerith Galansky Pisana. She is our current city commissioner for District One. The election is on May sixth, which is a Saturday. And I believe that early election voting starts on the twenty-fourth, so let's get out there and let's vote and let's make a difference. Uh, because at the end of the day, it's not about me. It's not about Ms. Galansky. It, it's about the future of our children and the future of the city. So, we definitely need everybody to go vote regardless of whose side you're on. So, Ms. Galansky, thank you and we'll see you soon.
Have a good night and thank you again.
You too, and you better get out of there before they lock you in. Alright, alright.
Good night.
Good night. Bye-bye.